Joe, you lead us for the word.
Sure, let's, let's have a word spread. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you just to stop and ask for your guidance tonight, ask for your wisdom, be with these board members as they make decisions that affect this school, affect these children. May I ask for your blessings upon them, blessings upon this school. God is all, in the name of Jesus the Christ.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Seven oh six, I call a meeting. Judy? Record absent, present. All the items which concern, items of a routine nature, normally approved by one vote unless the board members decide to have a separate vote on all or, all the, these items. Minutes of the August third, twenty fifteen regular board meeting, August thirteenth, twenty fifteen special meeting, B, activity fund report for August two thousand fifteen.
Do you want me in?
Yep.
Sorry?
Yep, activity fund report if you will.
Okay, I gave you a summary of the accounts that shows all the balances, and then is the check register. Got some officials coming out for softball, and our first set for football came out.
Talk from the backside of papers.
Yeah, I did everything.
Okay, I got you. Save paper.
Just scroll down there and see if there's anything that cuts it off, and I'll see if there's anything blurring it in. Then after the check register is the, um, receipt register, and that shows all the money that came in for the month.
Any questions over activity fund? Treasurers report for August twenty fifteen.
So, turned it over to the state.
Alright.
Hey!
It's not approval.
Good news.
So we worked this up for you guys.
Alright, is that what the blank sheet?
July and August?
Oh, there we go, I got you, I got you.
Cool, I'll get my wheels turning here, spend a month.
I love them.
Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, that's awesome. I know what's going on when you do that.
Yeah, I understand it a lot.
Yeah, I can follow that.
There is clarity.
It is very, very clear.
Really nice.
And I do want you to know that those ladies really worked hard this weekend on their own time to get this out. I, they're just so willing to do anything, and I appreciate it.
On Labor Day, laboring on Labor Day?
They were laboring.
Are you a farmer?
Hey, me too. Yeah.
You a farmer?
And when I work Saturdays.
Okay, good, good.
That's what they said that's for.
Gotta take one day off.
What Labor Day's for.
Yeah.
Well, that's great, this is helpful.
Yeah, it is.
You'll get that every month. And I, and I apologize for not having to pack it to you this, this month, we just didn't get it all together this month. But, uh, we're, it was kind of a busy one with contracts and with payroll, the first payroll, and, and still not closed out with the, but, but we will, and what the, the plan is next week is, next year, next something, next month is to have everybody their own three-ring binder, where this is in the binder, and every month we'll just go on top of each other, and that way we'll, we'll keep up with it and bring you your binder every month, and that way you have all of the last months.
Thank you very much. Getting better, thank you.
I feel better now. I, for a while I was just like...
That's a lot of information to try to figure out.
Yeah.
We'll get you reading on the polls here.
Yeah.
D and encumbrances for general fund and any change order or warrant?
Um, you can kind of see that, those, those, um, general fund, building fund, child nutrition and building bond, you can, that's in your package, you can see what we've, um, encumbered and what we've, um, warrants have been issued and all those things.
What's a boot camp registration?
Boot camp registration, that FFA?
No, that was Coach Mike Holland went to, it's one of the coaches clinic in Tulsa, she went to a different one.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
Who started military school or what?
You know, it's...
Some of them need it, I know that.
Things to look at.
The ones that have five eighty-eight to sign in, those are the ones on fine, so, those are small little schools, great, we get.
Okay. Alright, uh, let's see, encumbrances for general fund, encumbrances for building fund, encumbrances for child nutrition fund, uh, encumbrances for the building bond fund.
And I don't think that that, um, on that, uh, on the bond fund, Judy, that's really not in a negative, is it? That, that's just what had been brought, sent back to the school from what, okay, that incorrectly.
We're gonna have to talk to Betty and see for sure.
Okay.
Because I was under the impression that, with the money that we, where I bagged, there would be exactly three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in that, in that account, and so I made a bond payment, and it was quite three hundred eighty-five, so there should have been just a few thousand left. But then when she did all that, it showed that there wasn't as much in the treasury as, as we were reporting.
Because when we did it on our own, it was like ninety thousand dollars left in that, you know?
Now that's, that's the money at bank first, that's, that's different than our here at the school. Because ours, so that's all we're supposed to have in it, so it was three hundred eighty-five thousand that we got. So everything over that we sent back, and then whenever we figured this out, we're like, there must have been some more money in there.
Okay, okay. Um, on that, on the bond stuff, uh, I have been working with, uh, farmers and getting that lease purchase kind of taken care of. Uh, we're just gonna draw it as we need it, so that we'll save us some interest over time, and, um, getting the final details ready to kind of let you know how that all went, but...
Okay. Discussion vote to declare the following activity funds a surplus and no longer needed. Class of twenty twelve, class of twenty thirteen woodworking academic conference. Discussion and vote to approve the following activity fund transfers. Middle school cheer seventy-five dollars to high school cheer per parent request. Class of twenty twelve, uh, seventeen dollars and sixteen cents to beautification activity fund. Class of twenty thirteen, four forty-seven eighty-four beautification activity fund. Woodworking, six hundred and fifteen seventy-seven to beautification activity fund. Discussion and vote to approve fundraiser submitted. Band for the lightweight bracelets and food. Junior high cheer Webster jump rope clinic. Junior high cheer of the Webster end-of-year dance fifth and eighth. Junior high elementary cheer Webster, puff and booger selling face tattoos. Uh, FCC LA reoccurring every year beef stick popcorn candy. FCC LA fifty-fifty raffle and sporting events. So is there any, is there any questions on any of those listed A through J?
Motion to...
Just one vote, right? Yeah, just a motion and a second. I'll make a second. Jeff's motion, T J's second.
Littleville?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Yes.
Along number three, vote to approve a contract with Williams Scotsman for a portable building to be used at the elementary.
Uh, we're gonna see that at the end of the month, um, if we approve contract tonight. What's happened is, is that we've taken, um, a lot of enrollment at the elementary, which is a good thing. But, you know, in, at the original planning, the plan was to just do one fourth grade because, uh, it was very small, and it was, um, uh, a lot of the kids that were maybe, um, uh, cut on track. And so, uh, then it grew and grew and grew and grew, and we didn't have any place to put them. So when we decided to do the three-year-old program, we needed that room that fourth grade's in, because it's got the little stuff. And so we're going to, um, put the fourth grade in the portable. It's gonna cost us, uh, seven hundred fifty dollars a month over, but, and then there's a two hundred dollar fee for all the ramping a month. And I asked about that, I said, can we do that ramping ourselves? Because there was something else on there I had them take out, so we can do that ourselves. And they said, well, they're handicap accessible and they're, the regulations and all that, and I thought, you know, I, I, as, as good of friends as the fire marshal and I are, I thought it would be best for somebody else. Make sure that that's okay, so I can say it wasn't me. But, um, so I went ahead and said, okay, let's do that. So it is a lease purchase over, not a lease purchase, a lease, over three years, and that gives us three years to determine what we would like to do as far as spacing, if there's another bond in the future for the elementary, we can kind of see what the numbers do over three years. It's a good, good, uh, rest period to be able to just take a step back and say, what do we need?
Right.
So, um, that'll be put, uh, it's, uh, uh, fairly new, I've been assured that it's, uh, you know, very good condition. It's got, they've got bathrooms in them. If we don't end up splitting the fourth grade, that other room will probably be used for like OTPT, uh, any kind of specialties that could, that need a little room to be able to do stuff, so, um, we have plans for it. And the county's already taken out the backstop spec there.
Saw that.
It just opened it all up, it's just like, wow, it's like a big place, um, and, uh...
If we continue to grow, we can always add another one next to it, or...
We can, we can do, yeah, we can. That's just kind of an ideal place, since it's not used anymore, because it's got a, a good base, and it's really right there by the electric and the sewer and the water, so...
Won't cost you much to do.
Mm-mm, no, not at all.
So we're doing the seven fifty a month, and then no two fifty a month for the ranch, you think we can do that?
We, I think we're gonna go ahead and do the two hundred for the ranch, because it'll be nine fifty a month.
Okay.
Yeah. And like I said...
They had a lot easier.
Yes, it will be.
Well, that'll give us time to figure out where the numbers are gonna land.
Mm-hmm. And, and I do want you to know that, um, uh, I'm taking that out of building fund, but, um, one of the things that happened when we didn't use, go with the co-op is that, you know, we got that seventy-five thousand dollars back, and so that was one of the things that I felt like that could be part of that seventy-five thousand dollars if we needed to, but...
Yeah.
So, uh, it's not like we're gonna be spending new money that, on top of money we've already spent, because we've got a seventy-five thousand dollar kind of leeway.
Now, if there's a air conditioner heating problem, or, or do they maintain it and everything?
No, we maintain.
We maintain it, it's just a building and everything, it's our, it's just on the front.
Right, 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 right.
So you can kind of just pick on the services that you want and...
Yep.
On the back.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions on portable building for the elementary?
No, I'm making motion to approve the contract with Williams Scotsman for portable building.
Second. T J made the motion, Jeff's second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Guess that's it. Was waiting for the other. Uh, number four, proposed executive session to discuss, to discuss the following items for the fifteen sixteen school year pursuant to O S twenty-five three oh seven B one. Uh, A, support contract changes, B, computer science contract changes, C, certified positions for the little chief's three-year-old program, and D, special education director. Do I have a motion to convene in the executive session?
Motion to convene.
I'll second. Jeff's motion, T J's second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Fine.
Time is seven twenty. Oh, yeah, that's a break.
You're doing it. That's okay.
Executive session compliance statement, uh, no action was taken during the executive session. You know, we discussed the following items for the fifteen sixteen school year pursuant to O S twenty-five O S three oh seven B one. A, support contract changes, computer science contract changes, and certified position for the little chiefs, special education director. And time is eight o'clock. Number eight, vote to approve changing hourly support contracts to ten-month contracts. I make a motion?
Second.
T J's made the motion, Jeff's second. Can you just call us by name?
Hello. Yes.
Littleville? Yes, T J?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Number nine, vote to approve hiring Allison McFeeters on a temporary three-seven certified contract for the fifteen sixteen school year.
Motion to approve her hiring.
Second.
Jeff's made the motion, T J's second. Yes. Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
There you go. Ten, vote to approve hiring Alicia Bailey as a temporary certified teacher for the fifteen sixteen school year. I make a motion. T J's made a motion.
Second.
Jeff's second. Yes?
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Number eleven, vote to hire Sheila Glover as the district special education director.
Motion to hire.
Jeff's made the motion.
Second.
T J's second. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Number twelve, principal reports.
Alright, Chad, you're up. Make it quick, you know where I gotta go. No pressure.
This is even get a dime.
A little...
Pretty slick.
This is really cool, I'm glad you showed me that.
Um...
I don't think those were the words I said when I signed the perch sort of bit, that really is...
No, you don't think it's cool when, when it's all ready.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Like talking.
No, but isn't that cool?
It is really cool. Um, the...
Look at that, isn't that cool?
We just got this today, and that's why Donna hasn't even let me see this.
I haven't even seen that, it's so awesome.
These are, uh, the graphics that we, uh, are able to put on our equipment here with the high jump and the pole vaults.
Wow.
Doesn't that look amazing?
Yeah, it does.
And the front page is just, it's a, it's a long jump pit, it's not, it's a, better than a standard long jump pit. Uh, the grates that you see here, it's a sand catching system. Whenever people jump and sand goes out, take a broom and you sweep it back and it just keeps filtering it. So, it, where it's also gonna have a cover and keep out cats, weeds...
Right.
Moisture, so... That was, that was today's project. Well, I saved today, that was finalizing, that was the thing, so... But just a little bit, on the other hand, out, stuff that we've been doing. Um, timing system is the length system, which is pretty much the, the best around. Um, we did access the Pioneer Spirit Fund, which completely paid for the, the timing system, and then we have a little bit left over to use in other areas. Uh, conduit for the timing system, that's another bit of, just a project ongoing this past month. The P A, I hate to call it a P A, because it's more than a P A, it's more of a sound system.
Yeah.
Um, an example of th- this company, which the name, it's kind of an odd name, Small Pocket Poets, but this company is the best I've seen. I've been to football stadiums, uh, that I've seen in place, and I say football stadiums, small, small stadiums. Our stadium is not necessarily gonna be small per se, um, but a classy stadium I've been to. They, that's the same company that did our gymnasium two years ago. And this company did Southwestern, if we remember playing down there.
Okay.
Um, they do excellent work.
That'll cover all areas in the sports complex, I guess.
Yeah, yes, that's one thing when we went over with them. We wanted to make sure we got all the baseball, softball, uh, speakers that go out to the field events. Um, and, and the system itself too is gonna be, we can turn each one of those areas off, or we can turn it on as one whole system.
Cool.
Um, yeah, at track meets, we're gonna be able to have a, a wireless mic, so we can have some mobility.
Yeah.
And be able to announce over the intercom. It's really gonna be short. Um, solving some, some drainage in the D zones has been a project, and they just completed that. If you've been by the track, you can kind of see in those D zones where the gravel is, the drainage pipe is underneath that, and it's gonna push all the, the water that collects in those areas out. So, that's, uh, that's, might sound like a small thing, but it's huge, so...
Yes.
And I gave you pictures of the high jump and pole vault pads, we got those, we got those ordered last week. Uh, and the long jump, which I just talked about, we're getting that group Gill, and we're still coordinating all the key people with that, that takes coordination with our architect, our school people, our construction manager, Gill, and even the track company that will come in and put the surface down on top of that, so... A lot of under, a lot of work to undertake. Um, bleachers, we're covering the areas in the bleachers, we got those ordered, and also coordinating with all those same people in our visitor's side, uh, for football, our baseball side. The bleachers that we have that are set in the parking lot that we bought last year, we really only got to use them for two games, we're able to, uh, reuse those in the facility, in the softball area. And the bleachers coming for baseball should be, um, matching those as close as possible. I don't know if you can ever do anything identical, but as close as possible. And then also the same company is, uh, we're getting benches that will have a dual purpose. They'll be for our football sidelines, and then they'll also be in our heating area whenever we host track meetings. Um, any moment, we're hoping to get the revisions on the new building, uh, concession locker rooms, et cetera. And then also talking with our track company on just making sure the striping layout is specifically what it needs to be.
Yeah.
That's, none of this stuff I think you take for granted. If you take it for granted, then you'll show up and, and you will be able to run the hundred, hundred and ten meter hurdles one way, but it's not gonna match up when you run it the other way, and, uh...
That's important.
Taught that, and so they're, they're reworking it.
Alright.
That's, that's it, and that's it.
Thank you, and I just want to say a little bit...
Thanks a lot, Chad. Thanks, Chad.
The gravel underneath, um, we changed that because we wanted to add back some sidewalking that had been taken out in the complex, because, um, I just think that that's very important, that people don't have to walk. You have this beautiful complex, you need the sidewalks to go to the baseball and the softball field. So, uh, it's gonna look really good with that gravel underneath, and, uh, hopefully the...
Just underneath the bleachers, so...
Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chad.
Perfect!
Number thirteen, superintendent report.
Nope, let's go, we got another principal. Yeah, I do, do you want me to, I'll, I'll, if you've got something to add in, I'll, you know, uh... We talked about today, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about the testing, the A C T testing that we're gonna change out, um...
Oh, do you assume?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the state had passed something that was gonna allow all junior, they basically just recruit, and we discussed it with the superintendent, uh, and several people about this offering. But sure to be all junior names in here, kind of for those kids, and I'm sure you can pay for that, but...
And the reason for that is that if we go with what the, the state superintendent wants to do, you have to only let your juniors test on that day for that last test date that would mean something to the seniors. And so we decided as a, a, a team that our seniors are just as important to us as the juniors from that last test date when they're looking for getting into college, not taking remedial classes. And so we felt like that it was a commitment that we could make to our juniors and seniors to pay for one test this year.
Okay.
So they can, they don't have a financial holdup to taking any test. So I was real... Yeah, that, Mr. Um, Mr. Hickman and Anita worked on that, and I was, I appreciated their work on that. Um, oh, we've got like ten going to the career tech, we've got several going concurrent, um... Football went well, I felt like it went well.
What was the feedback from the northwestern people about the, I mean...
I haven't heard anything from them this week. I think they were surprised at maybe the number, because I don't think the concession stand was able to accommodate everybody.
Oh, no, they closed in like the third quarter.
Right, right.
I needed a water for the whole fourth quarter, really? It was two dollars a bottle, but... No, I was just wondering, because, I mean, they were very strict about people being on the turf and walking down there. I mean, they, they had security, and I just wanted to...
No, I didn't hear anything.
No negatives, back, backseat good.
No, I thought everybody did a great job.
Nice facilities, nice to use.
Nice facility.
The A C T, are we, the testing's in Alba, right?
Uh, we're a test side.
We're gonna be at the...
We're a test side.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Because I was always worried about transportation, you know, if we're gonna require them to be there, we need to...
Anita worked really hard to get us to be a test side.
That's great.
So excited about that. Um, county fairway? Softball, doing well? I think that's hit the highlights of what we talked about, um... Cross, cross country, very, very good turnout. They did a good job this weekend. Um, elementary real quick, uh, just want you to know that, um, the, we are looking at doing a alignment, uh, little to big, all the grades in language arts and math. Uh, that, what I found is that their curriculum is a little, uh, nonexistent, maybe? And so we're going to go ahead and, uh, buy something that they can all use and feel good about, and, and make sure we're kind of all going in the, the direction, and that, when I say nonexistent, we're not, that's not, uh... We're not the only school in the state of Oklahoma that way. Because you're looking for, waiting for, well, Common Core's coming, we need to wait to buy textbooks for that, and now it's Oklahoma State standards are coming, we don't have the time to wait anymore. We're gonna push forward, and we're gonna find a good program for language arts, a good program for math, and we're gonna do some really good things for kids, yeah.
Rather than wait for the government to figure out which way they're gonna get it.
Right, and, and Senator Langford was here last week, and one of the things he discussed with me was that they're really gonna work hard this year, um, at the, at the, at his level to get rid of no child left behind waivers and, and, and requirements to, to some of that, and, and put it, make it back to where the states can just say, we have to have some type of test, but the state decides what kind of test you take, and... And so there'll be a lot more freedoms, uh, for local control. But, um, we're just, um, gonna go ahead and do what we need to do for kids and go on. But they're, they're packed, they're at capacity, and, and, uh, it's, it's a good, good day to be a chief.
Alright. Jeremy, congratulations on the middle school.
He can take giggles like that.
Do you, you work that thing?
No.
Well, congratulations.
Jeremy is going to go, uh, to this, to this state department and help set standards for middle school principals. So very, very excited and honored that one of our, uh, staff, and I just think that as time goes on, we'll have more and more of our staff members that are, um, getting, uh, those type of, of, um, you know, recognition, because we've got good people here.
Alright, cool. Alright. Number thirteen, superintendent report.
I think I've said everything I need to say, 'cause I gotta get in the car. My, my husband wants to know where I am right now. I, I think I, yeah, I've said everything, uh, if you guys have any questions, you know, I've talked a little bit about everything. Good to go, it's a great day to be a chief.
Number fourteen, new business?
There is no new business.
Okay, number fifteen, Jeff's made a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Let her sit here a little longer.
Only save Bubba a second. Alright, let's go.
T J's second.
Littleville? Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Fine.
How far would drive it?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.